Okay. Welcome, everyone. We just came out of executive session, so we set the pledge in session. We are ready to rock and roll. I -- you want -- I'll turn you over to superintendent's report. I don't know if there's any communication from the public at this time. The big public that we have.
The big group.
The big group. So, at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Bowers for her report.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone. We have a number of things to share with you. The first is about our day with Paul Yellen on the 26th of September. And as you know, we're in the beginning of the third year of our strategic plan. And Paul Yellen came to help us move into our second year of learner profiles. And for those of you who have been watching as things progressed last year, we created learner profiles and we had them primarily given to the -- just the general education kits. And all students in grades four, seven, and nine took the learner profiles. They were the basic profiles. They gave students an understanding of who they are as learners and what the different strengths and challenges they will deal with as learners. And that was step one. Now, we're looking at the relationship between the learner profiles and RTIs, Tier Two and Tier Three RTI, which is somewhere between the regular education situation and special education. And as we go through Tier Two and Tier Three, we're looking at what type of profiles will be needed. And so, obviously, they would be more extensive. It would bring in the teachers. It will bring in the parents. It'll bring the student in into a greater detail. Surveys would go out to all of the participants for the profile, and a much meatier, heartier profile will come out that both the student and the teacher and the parent can work with. And so, we had one day of kind of visioning where we were going with this. We are going to have more training at the end of October that will actually help us create the second types or the Tier Two and Tier Three profiles. And then, we'll be ready to try it for this year. And so, this is -- it's kind of new to all of us, and it's something that really we will refine and create and see how it works throughout the school year. So, we thank Dr. Yellen for coming in and working with us again. You also are aware that Maittwardy left the district late summer this year, and since then, we have been filling his position by using the support of the people from within. And we had three people, Gary Van Assault, who has been taking on the responsibilities of basically the director of Building and Grounds and Transportation. And he's been doing all the work with the cleaners and the support staff and transportation. We also had Mike Lisakakis, who has taken another arm of the Building and Grounds group. And he is actually the -- he's working with the construction and the different types of things that we're going to be working on this year, the creation of the new library. He's helping us install our new bleachers that are in the process of going in right now. And he will be the maintenance arm of the Building and Grounds. So, both Gary and Mike have been sharing the responsibilities. Elisa Travis has been taking on, who is our dispatcher, has been taking on more responsibilities with transportation. And so, we thank all three of them for stepping up. We also have Cheryl Cobb, who is our head cleaner, who has been taking both the daytime and the evening responsibilities for the custodial staff. So, we are in the process of figuring out the stipends that should go to each one of them. All will fall within the salary that we had for Michael Twardy. And we can allow this format to continue for three months in a temporary position, and then, we have to make decisions. And so, when the decisions come and when we have the time, it'll be in December, we'll be making recommendations. We are also working with civil service to make sure that we're doing it in the ways that they are suggesting that we do it. And so, that's where we are as far as our B and G. And I don't know if you have questions or there's things that either Ann or I can share with you. We've had a lot of conversations. We've talked about some of the smaller idiosyncrasies of the position, and we'd be happy to answer them.
I'd like to know how you think it's going.
I think it's going pretty well.
Yeah.
I have to say, I think that they've been very communicative. We know a lot about what's happening. It's -- we're having regular meetings to the point that probably weekly, we're meeting with all of them, and Ann and I are meeting with all of them. And I think it's going pretty well. So, you want to share your thinking?
I think that's as far as it goes.
That's as far as it's going. Okay. I'll just get closer to you. I think that it is going very well. It's nice to be able to work with the staff that's been here, that knows everything about the buildings at this point. You know, we went into the school year with a lot of changes, and I just think that that's a key position, that if that was brand-new as well, it really might not be as smooth as it is right now. So, I'm grateful that we're able to have this transitional time so that maybe when the dust settles of the beginning of school, we can wrap our heads more around what to do with that position.
I can tell you that the people that are stepping up, they have so much experience and so much knowledge of the district that it makes it almost flawless. And there are things, as we start talking about the potential of a bond referendum, the depth of their understanding, and the suggestions they can make to us are invaluable. So, it's been very good.
And I think we saw some of that, right? When we did our Buildings tour, it was nice to see that they knew the walls, basically, inside and out.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep. Okay. So, the Haldane International Club will be going to Quebec tomorrow, actually, and through the 7th. And we wish them well and hope they have a great time. And hopefully, the weather's nice and it's not too cold up there. We have a safety committee meeting scheduled for the 16th of October, 3:15, in Room B1 of this building, if anybody has an interest in joining us. One of the things that we will be sharing is we just finished the revisions on the crisis intervention plan. And there is a requirement from New York State Education Department that it be submitted to the state by the 15th of October. So, I know that Chris Salam is working on that with the secretary to get the submission. It's been in the works for probably the last eight to 10 months as we've gone through the process. But I think we have a good, updated crisis intervention plan. And the Building and Grounds Committee, we had our first meeting. It was held on September the 14th, and it was to talk about the potential of the bond referendum occurring sometime in the near future. And it was a review of what we did last year, and it's going to start moving into our board workshop meetings. And the next workshop meeting on the 17th, we'll be discussing the potential of a bond referendum and what we're presently thinking about at that point.
Actually, that workshop meeting, we're thinking of holding in the high school, Room 211, so that we can have a different setup and all be at the table and invite the Buildings and Grounds members to the table.
Is the high school 211 or the?
It's high school 211.
It is high school 211. Okay. And it's going to be more of a discussion workshop conversation than something that we would have in this type of a setting, because we need people's input. All right. So, also, on the 17th, and we'll have to let Benedetto know, we are going to have -- our external audit will be shared with the Board of Education on the 17th, and that will be the same evening. So, we would invite anybody who has an interest in hearing about our external audit to please join us for that. We are also -- we have been in -- excuse me, a second. We have been in conversation with Monolith Solar. And for those of you who kind of watched what happened with our solar panels last year, if you remember, once our solar panels were placed on this building, in between arrays of the panels were something called DC connectors. And what they were for, those are safety devices that will shut down an array. So, if there's a problem in one part of the array, it is -- it's almost like a switch that flips that keeps the energy from flowing. And last year, the -- one of the arrays or one of the DC connectors within the array actually had water seep into it, and it caught on fire. And it got to the point that it was smoking, and right before it was -- could have been a potential problem, we had -- it was seen on the roof, there was smoke rising, and it was shut down. And it's been shut down since that time. So, we are trying to figure out what we should be doing with that array. And we've been back and forth, and our attorney has contacted the attorney from Monolith. I'm sorry to say that they have been almost unresponsive. We did get, a couple of weeks ago, when we called and kind of gave them a deadline, there was a response back. And what we're asking for is if the solar panel and the arrays stay on the building, that we have an outside contractor come in and do an annual inspection to make sure they're safe. Monolith is saying they will only do that for two years. And our response is it makes more sense, if you think about it, the older the panels get, the more the need for that type of an inspection. So, our attorney is continuing to send the letters that were sent earlier to try to get a response. We have not heard anything back from Monolith at this point. And we're going to have to start making a decision about what we need to do with the panels. But they have been offline. They are not generating any electricity that's supporting the district or supporting Monolith at this point.
And it's only that one array, or it's all of them?
It's all of the arrays on this building.
All of the arrays on this building.
And when -- and they were --
Which is most of them.
Correct.
Right.
And State Ed, originally, Monolith wanted to just take the DC connectors out of commission. And the State Education Department said that's not allowable. You have to put new DC connectors in. We obviously would not be putting the same type. I did -- some of our guys did go up on the roof and looked at the DC connectors that are still there, and all of them now have water in it. So, that was just a fault of that type of DC connector. We've had them here. We've had conversations, and really, it's going nowhere. We're just kind of dead in the water with this. So, it's something that we need to be thinking about. And, you know, if we don't hear from Monolith's attorney, and we ask that they contact us in the very near future, I don't believe that Mike has gotten anything back from their attorneys, so we're kind of just stuck.
It almost seems like they hit a break-even point or something for them not to be responding.
Yeah.
So, that makes this even more interesting, because we have all this equipment.
It's very disappointing. I mean, we've been dealing with this for, what, a year now at least? When was the fires? About a year, right?
Yeah, about a year. Yep.
And so, for a year, we've been at the standstill. It's been like pulling teeth trying to get them to talk to us. And when they do talk to us, I mean, the presentation they did here was lackluster, to be nice. And, I mean, in a way, I feel like I want another company just to come in, get rid of their stuff, and put their other -- put some new stuff on. I mean, we should have a solar program here, if we can. And if it's not with them, then it's not with them.
Unfortunately, though, they do own, right, the other buildings have their equipment on it.
Are they going to take that off? I mean, why do business with a company that is clearly unresponsive and unprofessional?
Because his big presentation, and I just, actually, I want to confirm something first. Those DC connectors are not present in the other arrays, right? They're just particular --
Not at the high school.
Not at the high school. Just they're just particular to this building, which is why these are off.
And it was such a large array, I think that that -- it was a requirement that it be -- the DC connectors be placed on this building.
Because, I mean, part of his presentation was like, it was a one-in-a-million, you know?
Right.
Right? Even though there had been two at that point.
And that was one, right.
Yeah. We were the one-in-a-million.
And then, there were two, because there were even two by the time he spoke. And now, there, it's a much more -- and it's just, yeah. I mean, it's something to be careful about, right? Because one of the things I remember, I mean, it was well underway by the time I joined the board, but one of the real concerns is that our roof is relatively new, and, you know, we're still under the warranty for that. And, you know, having lots of people up and down off the roof, you know, it's a complicated -- it's a complicated situation. I don't -- well, yes, on the one hand, I think, oh, yeah, sure, we wanted to have so -- we wanted to have a solar power program, right? It was something that was really important to a lot of people, and we were all really very excited about it. Before there were such concerns about the roof, before we made big plans to like take these off and put something back on, I think we definitely need to get people with much more expertise than I have about roofs or solar panels to weigh in on it. Yeah. I mean, because there's, yeah.
Do we have a venue, like, to report them, to New York State Ed?
Well, which has been done.
Well, just as far as they do business with school districts, they must have some list of vendors that have been reported by districts?
Yeah. Well, what got them to respond finally is I emailed and said if I didn't hear from them by the end of the week, I was going to contact both State Ed and NYSERTA.
Okay.
And NYSERTA is where they get their money. And it's what pays for a lot of this to happen. And I don't believe that NYSERTA knows anything about it. We immediately called State Ed when it happened, and they were involved. And they've actually given them the green light. But the only thing standing in the way of them coming and making the changes and actually moving forward is our need for annual inspections. And there's -- and he says, "I'll do it for two years, and I won't do it beyond that."
Can you remind them that this is a public meeting, that is in the airwaves, that information in the paper?
Sure.
So, right now, Monolith Solar is getting a bad name in the public, and he's also on videotape telling us one thing that is not, you know, so he's really messing it up for himself.
Yeah. And he's wondering why we're so aggressive with him. And, you know, it's just --
Because it's children's child safety.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a safety concern.
Absolutely.
We can't have fires on our roofs. This is a major safety concern. That's why we're being assertive.
And he has -- I mean, our perception of him is that he is not trustworthy, right? That he -- yeah. That he presented -- his whole presentation was that we were being really ridiculous. It's clear that we were, that, you know, that we were right about it.
I mean, and it's proof that we started off with one, now they're all problematic. So, hopefully, we can get some sort of resolution with Mike.
So, but if they all have water, so they'd have to replace all of the DC connectors.
They would have to remove all of them, yes.
They would have to remove all of the -- and I'm guessing that it is, there's something about it that's come down to cost-benefit for them is the only thing I can think about. They're going to lose, I mean, and I don't know then what becomes our recourse. If we don't own them, we can't take them off. I mean, I don't know what happens next.
But can we tell them to take them off?
Yeah, we can end the agreement.
Well, there would have to be an agreement by the attorneys or litigation or whatever would happen beyond that. I also have to say that there was some concern. I don't think it's anything that we really understand, or it may not be anything that's even problematic, but there was also some concern with the roof underneath a couple of them. And Gary shared that. And so, we have to look at, you know, whether it's starting to create depressions in the roof. And we don't know if that's a problem or not, but it's getting to the point that we really have to make a decision and move forward, you know, with this. And all they would have to do is pay for an annual inspection, and they're just not willing to do that.
Well, except if there's the potential that it's causing some sort of damage to the roof, right? So, we went into this with the expectation that it would not damage the roof, right? So, I mean, to me, that seems, if I sort of think about what's the chronology, right, of decisions to be made, the first decision, I think, would be to determine whether or not there's evidence that having them up there is causing potential damage to the roof.
If they were working perfectly, if they were damaging the roof, we can't have them there.
Then they'd have to come off. And I don't know how that, yeah. And so, I think that's the next, that's the next thing, is if there's some evidence, we need to know what the conclusion is about that. And because that really determines all the next steps.
But I think also, if they're not going to, if we've given them some timing ultimatums, and they're not going to do the independent inspections on an ongoing basis, then we need to figure out what our options are for getting out of the contract.
I agree.
Because that's --
How many years are left on that contract?
Also, the 15 years?
There are.
I think it was 20.
20.
Yep. So, a lot.
A lot.
A lot of years.
So, we have a lot at stake, actually. Okay.
Okay. So, I'll let you know when Mike lets me know, and if not, we'll kind of start pushing forward again.
So, is this something that we want to have on the agenda, sort of coming? Do we wait till Diana brings it, or is this something we want to make sure we come back and revisit? Because it seems, I don't know, I'm asking Laura.
Monolith Solar has been on our agenda over the past, like, three to four years.
I know, but I don't, it feels urgent, you know?
Yeah. I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just saying, it's like an ongoing conversation. It's just constant. It's not running the way we wanted it to run.
Sorry. If you'd like to put it on the next business meeting, we can do that.
That seems like the best, right? Not the workshop, but definitely the best. And then, if, obviously, if anything comes up between now and then, you'll let us know. Thank you. It's an unfinished business.
Yep. Just leave it there in perpetuity.
So, please, we're still in session.
Okay. And then, I have an announcement that I would like to make for many reasons and for all the most positive of them. I am announcing my retirement for, from Haldane and from New York State Education as of July 1st of next year. And so, I have had a wonderful time within this district, working with some wonderful people. It's been a great experience, and I've learned a lot. And I want to thank every one of you for making it a very positive experience for me and hopefully for you as well. So, I am tendering my resignation for purposes of retirement this evening, and I will be here through July 1st.
Thank you. Dr. Bowers, I'd like to congratulate you on your announcement of retirement and wish you all the best for what the future holds for you and your family. I know there'll be many happy moments, and I look forward, on behalf of all of us, working with you throughout the remainder of this year, and all the good work that the Haldane community has offered, including yourself, and so.
Thank you. Yep. I'm looking forward to it.
Great. Julia, at this time, I'd like to request a motion to add Item M3 to the agenda under new business.
Okay.
Okay? May I have a motion to just?
Second.
Okay. All right.
Do we have to vote?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we're going to have a chance to celebrate Diana throughout the year, I'm assuming, with parties and farewells, so we don't have to go into it too much tonight. And I know you like to keep things --
We have a lot to do before then.
I know, like, you like to keep things short and sweet. But I am going to say that I just wanted to thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
You know, as board president, for two years, Diana was on my speed dial, so --
And you were on mine.
Yeah.
And now, Laura's on mine.
Yeah.
This is what happens when you become the board president.
Yeah. So, I just wanted to thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
I mean, since you've been here, it's been 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and you've worked. And we'll continue to work all year, so, thank you.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure.
We're all very grateful. Okay. The committee minutes from the Buildings and Grounds, last Building and Grounds meeting is, are there any questions about them? Like, as Dr. Bowers mentioned, our next workshop will be focused on Buildings and Grounds and the possible upcoming decisions about a referendum. So, we'll be going into more depth about that. Okay. Any communication from the public at this time? No. Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
On behalf of the administrators at Haldane, I'd just like to wish you a congratulations. I know it's not approved yet, and it's got to be later on, but congratulations and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Julia.
Anything else? Okay. Consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. These are just the Board of Ed meeting minutes from September 5th and September 19th. All is in order, that I've reviewed. Are there any other questions, comments? The information reports are here for us to review. And then, we're going to approve these at the next business meeting. Okay? This is the new format? Okay? Consent agenda financial. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, these are the ones that we put off from the last meeting. We all had a chance to review them. In addition to, there are some donations from Booster Clubs and Red Robin Loyalty Program and Stop and Shop. So, here you have it. All those, did I do all those in favor?
You did.
I'm sorry. I did it before.
You did it before our discussion.
Sorry. I'm jumping ahead here.
You know, I just wanted to note, and Dr. Bowers, correct me if I'm wrong, but the Special Class Consortium Agreement, I just wanted to say for the public, that's really something we've been doing for a few years now.
That's right.
This is just the agreement, you know, for this coming year, but it's not different than the agreement we've had now, I think, for two years previously, where the, just in case the public's interested, Garrison, Haldane, and Putnam Valley School Districts, we have a special education consortium where we basically give a little discount. We service the special education students at $35,000 instead of 70.
70.
If we, so we try to service the students between ourselves instead of going outside.
Correct.
And that was something that you had put in place a couple of years ago. You built that team so that we could all not just work together, but also save some money.
And we've had, I think, all of the districts have taken advantage of that in some way or another. And we've had students that have been tuitioned into our district, we've tuitioned into theirs, and so, it's working well.
It's working.
And this has been several years?
Yes.
I feel like it's been more than two. I want to feel it's --
It's probably about two, because --
Dr. Bowers put it in place.
Yeah. It was, this is, I think, the beginning of the third year.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I just remembered it was one, my memory was it was one of the things that in her very first, in your very first year here, you put in place. It was one of those, right away, beginning to create efficiencies, right, in order to address some of these budget constraints. Just one of the many examples of the kinds of things that you put in place, yeah.
And one of the things that is in this agreement that we probably won't do, but it was there to begin the conversation, if we ever wanted to kind of revitalize the conversation to see if there's anything we wanted to change. And right now, I think everybody's saying that it's working just the way we wanted to, so we probably won't revisit it this year, but we'll see in the future.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion?
Motion. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. And discussion.
I just wanted to ask about number eight. So, the designation of the authority for the Student Support Specialist and Director of Athletics Dean to suspend students when necessary. So, is that new, or is that just something that you're asking for approval of?
Well, the --
Because we have to approve it?
The principals designate, the way that ed law reads, it's either, they'll say it's either the principal of their designate or their designate. So, this is making them the designate.
Okay. I understand.
And we do it annually. We do this annually.
I see. Okay.
And because we're such a small district, it seems like it's the same group all the time.
Yes, it is.[1778.15]
Lucky.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to unfinished business. We have our upcoming retreat on next Tuesday, and here in the makerspace rather than off-campus. And this will give us an opportunity to talk and figure out some next steps for where the district's heading and come up with, and possibly, we may possibly try to get BOCs in to just give us synopsis of what a search looks like. I know Jen and Evan have both gone through searches, superintendent searches. But this will give us an opportunity not to start a search, just to understand the process. So, we're going to try and reach out to BOCs to do that. And that'll be the focus of our retreat this year, the second part at least. Okay? Sure.
Hi. I also wanted, my name's Nancy Martinez Sorrelli, and I teach at the high school. And I also wanted, just on behalf of the teachers and the HFA, to thank you for your time that you've given us, and we look forward to looking, so sorry, to working with you over the course of this year. I'm very happy you're staying through July. And, and I know that nothing but good things wait for you in the future, and that you'll continue doing all your work on curriculum and instructional leadership. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you. I think we already mentioned that the location of the board workshop meeting that will take place on October 17th will be in the high school room 211, so please feel free to join us there. Peggy and Jen will be attending the New York State School Board Association's 98th Annual Convention and Education Expo in Lake Placid, October 12th through the 14th, which is next week. Sounds like it's going to be...
Road trip.
Sounds like it's going to be a great deal of information being provided. I know you both are attending some great communication classes and...
Yeah, I'll have to come up with some sort of presentation for the board, or way to share nuggets of what we learned. We'll figure something out.
And Jen and I are going for the pre-conference that starts on the 12th, right? So, I think the conference itself either starts on the afternoon of the 12th, or I can't remember. We're, no, it starts on the 13th. We're going for the pre-conference on the 12th. There's a half-day workshop on communication, and Jen and I are both going together. We will come back and share what we learned, absolutely.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Okay. Any additional communication from the public at this time? Okay. Then we'll move on to new business.
Okay. The first item is the approval of the CSE CPSE recommendations. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations of the Committee on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as indicated.
Okay. May I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. This next segment is the Athletic and Extracurricular Code of Conduct that we've, the district has been working on. We've had discussions throughout most of last year with small groups of parents, and Dr. Bowers was present at all of those meetings as well. I know we've all had a chance to review, and are there any questions?
Is there any difference between the attachment for the public content and the executive content on this one, since it's in here twice? Like, I didn't see anything. Was it just attached twice?
Probably. I think it got attached in executive content so we could see it.
Prior?
Prior.
I just wanted to make sure there was, because it's actually titled something a little different?
Yeah, and we made a few changes. There were just some tweaks, yep, that were fixed.
Okay, but we need to make sure that we're working with one document in the end.
The one that says the Athletic and Extracurricular Code of Conduct is the one, the title of the one that we're working with.
That's in the executive content. Actually, the public one also is now fixed to that as well.
Okay.
I think...
I think you probably have the same one.
And this is up for discussion at this point. I know we have our administrative team here who's worked on it. At this point, it's up for discussion. It's my understanding that this will go to Code of Conduct Committee, so I'll leave it...
So, just for my clarity, so this document is getting added to the Code of Conduct. It is not for the Athletic Handbook, it's for the Code of Conduct. Is that correct?
To me, this will be in both places. This will be an appendix to the Code of Conduct, but it'll also be part of the Athletic Handbook and any information that goes out for extracurricular activities. So, whether it's the play that you're involved in, any of those forms of extracurricular activities, it's all-inclusive. It's not just sports, so it would have to be in multiple places. To me, the best place for this is the appendix to the Code of Conduct, so that it's, that's, that's the big document. That's the document at your reorg meetings every July 1 or thereabouts that you reapprove. There's a reauthorization of it, so that that would be part of, this would be part of it, as an appendix.
So, this goes out with the packets?
We don't send the full Code of Conduct out to anybody. We send the link. This would go out to everybody. This would need to be signed for extracurricular activities to participate.
So, it'll be signed at the beginning of the year, not each time somebody signs?
Correct.
Got it.
Correct. Can I just make a few statements, maybe? So, I think everybody knows, this is something that we have been talking about since August. Mr. Solomon did a lot of work behind the scenes in terms of getting other area schools in regards to what their policies are. Some policies just use the Code of Conduct, it's not a separate. Some have a separate. So, there's a lot of variation in regards to what schools do. In regards to the information, as Jen and Laura mentioned, the goal here is this is kind of a draft form. We started the conversation in August, really just at the administrative level, because we were who was around. We'd like to then bring this, obviously, to the Code of Conduct where we need to have the stakeholders involved in the discussion, meaning teachers, students, parents, and administrators as well. Those are open meetings that anybody is welcome to attend. If it gets to a voting point, obviously, there are committee members that we would look to, but they are open meetings, so I open it up to anybody who wants to attend. A lot of research over the years as it relates to CTC, as it relates to the health and wellness of our children. I think we would all agree, I hope, that preventative factors are the best indicator to help our children make healthy decisions in their lives. The more we take away the pro-social behaviors, the more we take away the activities for kids at times to participate in, it can have a negative impact on life decisions or decisions that they make. So, striking that balance between holding accountable and making sure there's consequences, and yet, making sure our children are involved in healthy activity is important. And I think every school district would tell you they wish they had the answer. They wish they had the answer to make sure all of their children are making the best decisions they can make for themselves every single day, but there is no magic answer to this. Evan, you'd probably say the same thing. It's a constant balancing act as it relates to this. I think everybody would agree here in this room that at the heart of all of this, what we want to do is what's best for the students that go to school here at Haldane. And that is our goal, to keep them happy, to keep them healthy, to keep them involved, to keep them motivated, to make good decisions. So, that's our hope. I really look forward to healthy conversation at the Code of Conduct as it relates to this topic. But this is kind of a draft form. This is kind of what we're working with right now to see how, how it's, it's going. This all is aligned with the Code of Conduct already, which you approved in, at your reorg meeting in July, so there's nothing in here that really doesn't fall under the already existing Code of Conduct. It's just a little bit more specific to those extracurricular activities, which we know are, are kind of privileges. They're the additions. So, that's, I think I covered what I wanted to cover. But thank you for taking a look at it now. The timing maybe seemed a little rushed, but I think it's something important to me, and as a note to you as well, to kind of get the ball rolling. So, our next Code of Conduct meeting is Monday, is it the 3rd?
Six November 3rd.
It's the first Monday in November. So, we're just kind of going in order of committees. Those are, committee meetings are on Mondays. So, 6th, there you go.
So, if there's anybody that has an interest in being part of the conversation, they're welcome to be part of it. And this is, this is the template from which the final draft will be created.
I want to thank you all for all your efforts so far. I know it's never an easy task, and I also just want to remind everyone that the district is one piece of this. And I know we're all very involved with the CTC, and like Ms. Niffen has said, there is a lot of research out there, and I am confident that these decisions thus far have been made, keeping those in mind. So, thank you.
And I, I mean, I really want to speak to the fact, what I, what I heard Ms. Niffen say is this idea of, of really balancing these different considerations, right? Like, needing to make it, right? So, one of the things I think this really accomplishes is like making really clear what the expectations are, but at the same time, really, really paying attention to the whole child and really recognizing that we, especially if kids may be in trouble, we also don't want to push them away from, from the school and away from us. And it's, you know, I really appreciate, we don't know exactly what the answer is. We're, you know, you're doing your best, but the different components of the realities that you all are trying to address in this, I think, I really appreciate, and I think really reflect what are priorities. I look to my colleagues, what the board's priorities are, right? Not just to be punitive, but to really recognize, you know? I think it's so much of what the district's been trying to do in a bunch of different efforts, really recognizing those multiple needs. And I, I also really, you know, I mean, I think I spoke flippantly when we were talking about this last time, and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness.
Thank you again. Any additional communication from the public at this time? No?
Do you want to do M3?
Oh, sorry. It's not on the agenda, on mine, sorry.
Okay. So, the additional agenda item, item M3, the recommendation is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution, resolved that the Board of Education approves the terms of the fifth addendum agreement to the employment contract of Dr. Diana Bowers, a copy of which shall be incorporated by reference in the minutes of this meeting, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education President be and hereby is authorized to execute such fifth addendum agreement on behalf of the district.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
So, the addendum will be available in the minutes, as Julia said, but it'll also be available online on the website for anyone who wants to read it.
Okay. Yeah.
Right?
Mm-hmm. That's...
Well, it's written incorporated by reference, so I'm not sure that the entire addendum is included in the minutes.
Okay. Well, it doesn't matter.
Yeah.
It'll be on the website.
Yeah.
For anyone to see it if they'd like, under the contracts, like all of Dr. Bowers' addendums are, like all contracts are.
Right.
Yeah.
Great. All right. If there's no additional communication from the public, I...
It's 7:40. God, girl. It's not even. It's not even. Not even.
Although, we have been here, we were here earlier. We were in executive session.
Does anyone want to just talk? Anybody have anything to say? Are we sure? Are we sure?
I would just like to, just one, one last thing on, on Dr. Bowers, on the, the announcement as far as is early in the year. For someone, as, as Laura mentioned, that we went through the search, this is probably the, one of the few things that a board really solely, 100% falls on the board. We don't have the support from the district office for the most part, I mean, legal and so forth, but this, this falls on us, and the time that the board needs to do this to conduct the superintendent search is, is daunting. So, it's important to get this notice. So, so this is greatly appreciated as far as the timing of it, as far as, you know, a lot of times when people resign, they know they're going to resign, but they just hold off on, on the announcement. But it's, it's important, and that puts us now in, in the front. That gets the word out, gives us an opportunity to do the search, gives us opportunity for people to come to us for a search, so it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you again, Dr. Bowers.
Thank you.
And all the best. Okay. So, at this time, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Short and sweet.